Good morning, everybody. I almost said good afternoon all of a sudden. Good morning and welcome to today's regular board meeting. It is Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, 10:00 a.m. And we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you so much for joining us this morning for our board meeting, for my board colleagues, Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff that are present, and to any guests that are with us this morning. Thank you for joining us for our board meeting. I'll go ahead and read our board norms and protocols as we do at every board meeting. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Again, welcome. Thank you to Gloria Willis Middle School for hosting us. And I'm going to ask principal guest here in just a minute to share some welcome remarks. But again, just thank you all for joining us this morning. And I will ask Ms. Smith to do a roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, before we approve the agenda, just a couple of notes. I'm actually going to ask if we can amend today's agenda. There was, there are two new executive sessions that were added since the board, since the agenda was published. The first one you'll notice in Agenda Item Number 2B is a new executive session. And the second item that we're, that I'm asking to add is under 10B, which is an additional executive session that we're asking to add. So would...
Sorry.
So would entertain a motion to amend today's agenda with those two executive sessions being added.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. I'd now entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we jump any further into the agenda, I do want to, again, just say thank you to Gloria Willis for hosting us. Thank you to all the staff that made today possible to set up and to make sure that the board could function in our meeting today. So thank you for everyone that has helped to set up this morning. And then I would, if Ms. Guest would, Principal Guest would like to say a few words, just as, and thank you for inviting us. I know it's a busy day in your school this morning for your students. So, but thank you for hosting us and if you'd like to share any remarks.
I just want to say good morning to Board President Mr. Lopez and to Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield, board members and guests. We are excited about having you here and we just want to make sure we give you a great welcome. I was told that I had to do a presentation, so I have a music selection. I'm just kidding. They told me that, just come and say a few words. I just wanted to say that and say thank you for all that you have done to support Gloria Willis and I hope that you have everything that you need. And again, welcome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And again, best of luck to all the students today that I know are having a very busy day across the district, so. Okay, so our first agenda item would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of the parties involved under a coma for 10 minutes going in at 10:08.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Campbell will be joining us.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to return to open session, please?
So moved, second.
Moving second, any questions, discussion, seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, we are back in open session, thank you board. Our next agenda item is our community comment section, we do not have any comments today, but just a reminder for anyone, again, everyone is welcome to gum and give community comment, please just check in with our board clerk, the Monday, no later than the Monday before the board meeting to be placed on the agenda. Our next agenda item, item number four, our consent agenda, motion to approve today's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Next agenda item, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good morning, everyone. I will start off by saying, yesterday, I got to end my day by visiting the Quest Gifted Display, and I'm actually, I bought a bracelet, and it's really cute, but it matched my clothes, so I'm actually wearing it today, but several of our schools, several of our students from a lot of our elementaries had their business plan, and they were selling their items, and I bought quite a few items, so I'm excited to see how they hold up, been last, and I told the students I would give them feedback. But I got to start my day this morning by welcoming 20 potential candidates. HR, our human resource department has started a new recruiting initiative that we're gonna try to grow and continue throughout the year, but it's called Travel and Stay with KCK. Ms. Devon will be joining us later, but they brought in 20 candidates that had applied for different jobs, but not necessarily accepted a job. Those candidates were, they are on a bus, they took a little tour of the district, and they visited Silver City, Rosedale, and Harmon High School, and then we'll provide them lunch and answer any questions that they had. I did receive a text from Ms. Samrye Devon before the meeting, and she said, "We already have two elementary people who want to commit to Silver City because of the dual-language program, so we're excited about the potential, and we are hoping we can sign all 20 of the candidates," but it's an initiative, HR is trying to be creative to really show what is happening, the great things that are happening in our district. KCK rep hosted an event last Friday with our students of KCKPS, and our students got a chance to meet with Christina Anderson, former Slavelle student and nationally-known playwright, to talk to our kids in our community about her work. As a part of the community outreach effort, the KCK rep brought their production of The Ripple, "The Wave That Carried Me Home," to Eisenhower in the West Branch Library. So we're excited about that partnership. There is still time to register for our summer learning program. Registration ends April 21st. Please, for more information, you can find it on our website, and for those of you who are listening, please share that with our students and family, and they can reach out to anyone at their school or in the Leadership and Learning Department if they have questions. Are You Faster Than a Fifth Grader? I'm excited, not really, but I'm looking forward. Edwin wrote this. I'm looking forward to the upcoming Are You Faster Than a Fifth Grader event. I have started training, I don't, my hope is just to be faster than I was last year, so I'll be faster than a few more fifth graders, but that event will take place Friday, May 5th, at 10:00 a.m., and we start at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. All of you who are here, you're welcome to join us and to see if you're faster than a fifth grader. I will tell you that some of them just sprint the entire time, and unless you are an avid runner, you're probably not faster than those few. This is just a reminder, we'll have our listening and learning, the board will be hosting their last listening and learning session on Saturday, April 22nd, and it'll be at our central office from 10:00 to noon, and we'll be sending out more information regarding that. This morning, you'll hear an overview of how S.R. dollars have been allocated, we'll answer any questions from the board, but it is an opportunity to give feedback, and we can absolutely make adjustments, and so this morning's conversation is based off the feedback that we received early on, and then also feedback that we received during some camera sessions and some other sessions. So that discussion will be today, and then carry over to Saturday, the 22nd. And finally, the festival season is blooming in KCKPS, and a lot of these events have already happened, so I just wanted to thank our Fine Arts Department for hosting and organizing this. Students took part in the Spring Theater Festival at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, also students performed at the Middle School Choral Festival at Sumner, and then the High School Band Festival was held at Harmon High School, and the Strings Festival, if it hasn't already happened, will be happening, but I just wanted to take time to thank all of those in the Fine Arts Department for organizing those festivals, and for those of you who took the time to support them, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. I'll just share a few comments. Board, you should have received an email from Dr. Marcia Weisman yesterday regarding our board self-evaluation. As a reminder, we do have our board retreat and self-evaluation on April 20th, which starts at 3:00, and that will be held at MVP offices. Thank you, Mr. Goen, to your firm for allowing us to use the space. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for helping to set everything up. Board, if you could please, make sure you submit your self-evaluation to Dr. Weisman in the manner that she has requested, that would be great. An additional reminder, you also received an email from Ms. Dawn Downing regarding the board handbook, if you want to review that, and if you have any thoughts, feedback, suggestions, questions, we're going to do a review of our handbook as well during that session, so anything you could submit, and Ms. Downing has sent you a link where you can submit your questions or feedback, and then she will compile all of that and get it back to the board prior to the board retreat. So if you could do that, that would be great, thank you. As Dr. Stubblefield said, lots going on in our district. Again, we know students are testing today, so just grateful for our staff and students, and wishing everyone the best. And then, I'm sure some board members will share their perspective as well, but several of us had the opportunity to attend the NSBA National Conference last week, and it was a great, I'll say it was a great time for our board and our staff who attended, to really attend sessions together, to build some camaraderie, have time to build relationship with each other, and to network and hear from some of our peers across the country and in the metro area about just some of the exciting things that are happening in other school districts around us that we can learn from, but also to hear about some of the challenges that other districts are facing as well, that are similar to what we're facing, and so how we can learn and work through that together. So it was a great opportunity for us collectively and individually to grow and learn, both personally and professionally. You know, there were several sessions around diversity, equity, and inclusion that I thought were just excellent, and it spoke to the work that we're doing here in KCKPS. In some instances, I think we are further along, and Dr. Campbell and I had a nice conversation, and she mentioned how she sees that, and we see that we're doing some really solid work around our DEI work here in the district, and so just exciting to see that. I attended a session around board communications and relationship, and how important that is for us as a board, and I think a couple of other board members attended with me that session, and just the importance of the relationship building that we can have, not just when we're sitting here together collectively, but outside of here, to make sure that we are building a positive culture and environment for our district, and how that has to come from everywhere. So as a board, as staff, as community, building that positive culture in our district is so important, but also how we communicate with one another, right? And so making sure that we internally are communicating with each other better, and I learned a lot of different things that I can do in my role to help us communicate better, but just as a board, how do we communicate information to each other and then disseminate that out to our staff and to our community? And so there are different ways that we can do that. We're doing some of it now, I don't want to take away from the work of our communications team that's doing an excellent job with our newsletters and our social media, but I just, there are some things that I learned that I, you know, I'm gonna hit you up, Edwin, and we're gonna chat about some additional communication tools that we can use as well, and the types of things that we're communicating to our community. So I just wanted to highlight those things, I'm sure other board members are gonna share some things, some learnings that they had, but it was a great and excellent investment of our time, I think, for us to learn from other colleagues, and again, just the networking, the opportunity to hear from boards in California, boards in Minnesota who are doing some excellent work that can translate to some of the things that we're doing here in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, so thank you for that opportunity. And with that, I will open it up for other board member comments.
No, I'm going next. I would echo everything that Mr. Lopez has said about the conference. One of the sessions I attended focused on test scores and the importance of them, but the importance of really understanding the child and understanding what the child's needs are versus how they may look on a test. So just thinking about it from a holistic perspective is one of the things that I took away, but again, I echo everything he says. I also want to send a special shout-out to our parents and our staff that facilitated truancy classes, learning. I had a chance to be able to attend one of those, and to see our parents and hear their perspectives, and get a chance to really spend time with them, and be boots-to-the-ground in that situation was really enlightening, and so I just want to thank you for being there, thank our staff for being there. It's not an easy conversation to talk to our parents about their students, and it's really not an easy conversation to be on the receiving end, so thanks again.
I'd just like to say that on March 29th, I had an opportunity to go to our central office where the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation was presented, and I just want to say thank you to all of you who were there in presenting. It shows how we are moving in a very positive way, in the right direction. I know it took a lot of effort and a lot of time to put everything together to be able to do it, but it shows that we are moving, and I just wanted to take this time to say thank you, and I know that as we continue to move forward, a lot of our students and parents and even within the community, they will see it, and again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew.
I just want to again thank the board for allowing us to go to the conference, and I attended sessions on mental health, and that's a big issue, because we're still, our kids had problems before COVID, and COVID just exposed what a lot of our issues are in our school systems. Also, security, we need to be proactive, I mean, every day, it's almost frightening that we see someone being killed at a school, at a grocery store, at a church, and it's just too common, and then they talked about ways that we can be proactive. Diversity, equity, inclusion, big thing. I attended a workshop there. And then the issue of transgender, how do we help our kids who are dealing with certain things, and how do we make everybody feel included? And to do that in a way that's respectful to everyone, and the big word is communication. How do we communicate with each other? How do we get the word out? We gotta do a better job of sending out messages, and Ms. Drew and I just talked to a lady from Syracuse, and she was just telling us how they use Snapchat. I'm not into all of that, but let's use whatever medium that we can to communicate with our kids, our parents, and we just have to be more creative, and to get the word out. Nothing's perfect, but you gotta be willing to try, and then we gotta listen to our parents, the kids as well, to make sure we're including everybody. So, and the speakers they had were phenomenal, the way they set it up was like an interview session, the young lady, I can't remember her name, who plays the principal for Abbott Elementary, I thought she did an awesome job. She's not an educator, but she's playing one, and some people got a little twisted on that, but I thought she did a good job. Personally, my sense of humor is a little different, but I appreciated her, and I thought she did a-
Not you, Ms. Page, not you.
Yes, but I thought she did a good job. And then, former Vice President Bush daughter who works for NBC, she did a good job, surprisingly, I thought she did a good job, and then, well, my expectations, so I was biased, but I thought she did a good job. So it was a good learning experience, and just to meet different people and to see what other people are doing, so thank you again for allowing us to attend it. Thank you.
I would, and then Ms. Humphries, sorry. I would just echo all of the sentiments that have been shared around the conference, and really, the camaraderie of the board, to be able to be together, learn together, and kinda in real time, talk about those things, not in a meeting, that's not what I was saying. But I think my biggest takeaway is something that I continue to talk about, is the importance of our students, not just us hearing from our students, but them actually being at the decision-making tables when we talk about the future of public school education, what their futures look like, what our class offerings are, how they continue. We talk a lot about student-centered language, student-centered focus areas, those types of things, but at the root of that is students, and so how do we as a district do a better job of amplifying and hearing from our students, but also having them at the decision-making tables? And so, that is something that I will take away from the conference and continue to advocate for. I also just want to give a huge kudos, I know I have been on what has felt like a very long vacation, and Mr. Lilly has really gotten the facilities master plan in action and working, I know some of the committees and teams have started working together, but another piece of the conference was just how do we view our spaces now and in the future, and so I'm excited to continue that work. I had the opportunity to go to a few mills sponsored by some of our really great vendors, but to hear from other districts around how their buildings and their classrooms and their innovation campuses and all of that, so I look forward to coordinating with Mr. Lilly, a tour around the city of some of the really great places that we also have here, that we can have in our district as well. And then I also open that conversation up to anyone who has ideas or suggestions or things that we should look at as a facilities committee. More to come, but kudos, and thank you to Mr. Lilly for all the work that he's doing to make sure that our students right here in KCK have the best facilities to learn and to play, so thank you.
Well, I did not go to the conference, but I was here in town, and I have to tag along with Dr. Stubblefield about our Fine Arts Department. The Theater Festival at the Community College with our students was wonderful to see our kids participating, the joy that they get out of participating, what they learn. The Middle School Choir Festival, we have children in our district with beautiful voices, and they have so much joy sharing with each other. They had, we had all of our middle schools at Rosedale, and each group got to perform in front of the other ones, so they could see what their classmates across the district are doing, and how important music is to our children. The Strings Festival at Sumner with our high school students, it was beautiful. If you follow me on, what is it I do?
Twitter.
Twitter. I recorded a few snippets and posted on there. And then we had an elementary school, West Park Elementary, they have a long tradition of their fourth and fifth graders presenting a musical every year except during COVID, and they did Moana Junior a couple of weeks ago, and the event space was full. They did it two nights, and each night it was full of parents and community members. Our kids did an hour-long musical, which shows what a great instructor they had, that it was joy to see the expression on the parents' faces, their pride in their students. So academics are very important, but we can't forget art and sports, because I've been to some soccer and actually softball games, and they're proud of their kids, too. The kids are having fun, they're learning skills, they're learning to work as a team, so it's, we have to make sure we don't lose focus. Or just focus on one aspect of school, there's a myriad of opportunities for our kids, and we need to make sure that we keep those. So that's my thought for today.
Thank you. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I likewise did not go to the conference, I stayed in Topeka. That was very exciting. Lot of sunshine, lot of gloom, but no, seriously, please pay attention to the legislation that is being passed in Topeka. It's very serious in its attempt to undermine public education, and the undermining is on the policy standpoint as well as the funding. Luckily, the, one of the voucher bills, that was a universal voucher, voucher died in the Senate the night we left at, you know, about 4:00 a.m., so there's one still in the hopper, and things can come back. So do pay attention to that. The second thing, today at Central Office, 3:30 to 5, the Office of Broadband Development will have a town hall meeting to ask- will have a town hall meeting to ask about internet connectivity in our neighborhoods. And I hope, hopefully, I'm hopeful that parents were, were, were told about this, and perhaps, and Dr. Stubblefield, some of our staff can be there to share with them that while we're not in a rural area, we still do have issues with connectivity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. And thank you, board members, for sharing. And I would invite anyone of our staff or community members, if you see us and want to learn more about just some of the things that we've talked about today, and especially around the conference, please don't hesitate to talk to us and ask us about it. That's how we continue to learn as well. But, but thank you all, my board colleagues, for sharing today. All right. So, we're going to continue with our agenda, item number six. For those of you following along on the agenda, our board updates and approval board, these items have come before the board at least once and are up for potential action if it is the will of the board. First up on the agenda, item number A, or item letter A, it's recommended that the Kansas City Kansas Board of Education approve the recommendation to purchase professional development services, SAVAS, to support the training and implementation of the district-wide five-year PSYOP model rollout as submitted by Ms. Jacqueline Rodriguez, Director of ESOL and Migrant Programs, and Dr. Germaine Wilson, Executive Director of Student Support Programs and Family Services, and Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item, it is recommended that Kansas City Kansas Board of Education approve the submission of grant application consortium for the Bay State Corridor Department of Energy Grant Renew America Schools, Improvements for Public K-12 School Facilities, as submitted by Lenora Miller, Executive Director of Operations, Steve Lilly, Chief Operations Officer, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item, it is, the, Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Our next agenda item, C, it is recommended that Kansas City Kansas Board of Education approve the Professional Learning Plan, which includes Apple Inc., professional learning quote of $297,090 to support staff in implementing the connected devices for K-8 students.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, but I also just want to make a comment. Ms. Flores, thank you for making sure that this is done well and done as we are implementing new devices as well. Thank you.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda, item D, it is recommended that Kansas City Kansas Board of Education accept the low bids from five contractors in the amount of $296,975 for summer 2023 concrete and asphaltic repair replacement projects in accordance with the requirements of Board Policy DJED, as submitted by Mr. Wayne Carell, Mr. Steve Lilly, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, question.
Yes, Ms. Page.
I did send the question in, and I did get an answer back, but I asked because some of the elementary schools and one that I was at, Bannaker, they were concerned about the materials that are used on their playgrounds and how some of the kids are being injured by the surfaces. So, I did send the questions in advance. I'm not trying to surprise anybody, but there is a concern. And I did ask, and the second question, to me, I didn't feel I got answered, and maybe you can give me more, but what kind of materials are they going to use? And I know we're going for the lowest bid. I respect that, but at the same time, we're supposed to keep these kids safe.
Well, Mr. Clements isn't here, and I'm speaking on his behalf, but they're going to, we're looking at a port-in-place rubber surface. You've seen those on playgrounds around the place, but we'll, we'll show you samples of, you know, what we're intending to do to get your approval. There's also a combination of that and artificial turf in some places as well. But we'll show you, you know, what we're intending to put in there. Right now, the, the task is to fill holes, you know, and the asphalt that's crumbling, you know, we're just trying to patch that up right now. But we will bring to you all ideas of how to make the playgrounds more safe.
And I, I saw the list. I didn't see Benjamin Bannaker on there.
Say again.
So, I saw the, I'm seeing the list of repairs and things you're going to do, and I don't remember seeing Benjamin Bannaker on there.
Okay, I don't think it was part of the list that was put out the bin.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Ms. Ryan.
Can I ask a question? So, playgrounds continue to be a conversation. My first question is, are these expenses eligible under capital improvement? My second question is, or kind of what I, if it is the will of the board, I would like for us to have a, like, document that outlines each of our buildings that has a playground, the last time upgrades were made to it. I'm not sure if this will be available in the facilities.
It is a part of it.
Part of it, but I, I think we get bombarded with the different needs of the playgrounds, and I'm just concerned that we're, we're mosh, like, we're doing, meal piecing it here and there, and how can we make sure that it's equitable? But also, how can we make sure that deferred maintenance on playgrounds, that we're also addressing that and not waiting for it to get to the worst of where it is? So, that's, those are my two questions and my statements comments.
Right. And this, this project that we're on right now, I want to make it clear, it's more for the upkeep and maintenance of what we currently have. It's not for going into the elementaries right now to look at pour and play, look at, look at those different surfaces. I think that that is something that certainly needs to be addressed throughout the facility study. That's, it can definitely be done with capital outlay expenses, but it's also, when we start looking at that, it is major capital outlay expenses, and, you know, we're going to have to budget that over time. But if that's a priority, it's something that we can certainly be moving towards and looking into.
Okay. I appreciate you saying that because I also think, and I'm not the professional, but I'm sure that if we brought our physical education and our mental health experts to the table, they would talk about the social, emotional well-being of kids being, having access to play, having, and the importance of recess, which is another conversation that we need to have about not using that as a disciplinary thing. But I think these conversations, we have to prioritize something, otherwise our kids don't have anything, or it's, this is happening. And so, I respect what you're saying. I, I think about ESSR and social, emotional dollars. I think about capital outlay, like, how can we use all the dollars that we have to make sure that these huge expenses, and I don't know what huge means to different people, but I think we have to address it because some got addressed during the bond, some didn't. And so, it just continues to create this sore subject, especially around the equity of facilities for our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Additional questions? Ms. Page, did you-
No, I just wanted to say thank you for that, but I, I think Ms. Russell was correct. We do need to look at that because when I went to elementary schools, that was something they always brought up, like, what are you guys going to do? And some of these kids are going out here getting hurt on the playground. Playground should be fun, not a place to get hurt. So, we need to remember that and make sure we cover it and just don't let it blow by.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Okay. Seeing and hearing none. There was a motion second on the floor, Ms. Smith.
Mr. Lopez, I'm sorry, before we go, I just kind of to close this, this gap here. Was there an ask that we need to get clarified, or do, is everybody on the same page for this conversation? I'm sorry. It sounds like there was an ask, and I want to make sure that we're-
And I, I thought that the facility, yeah, I think the facility is going to look at the ask that, that was made from a couple of members from the board.
Okay, and it sounds like there was a consensus.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure we closed that gap.
Yep.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, Mr. Lilly, if we could just make sure that that's included as part of the, the facilities conversations. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item, it is recommended that Kansas City Kansas Board of Education accept the school naming committee's recommendations as submitted by Mr. Steve Lilly, as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield. Board, in the item, you'll see the recommendations that were listed, so hopefully you had a chance to look at, look at that. And just for background, again, this has come previously, and this would be to ask for a survey of our Harmon community, of our, of our community around Harmon High School and F.L. Schlegel High School.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Ms. Humphries.
I have a question for the naming committee. Did any conversation revolve around what the cost would be for changing the names of those two schools, as in signage, uniforms, all those things that we don't think about? Because I think it's very important that if the community is being asked about a name change, that they understand the financial repercussions of it.
So, I can say as the, the chair of this committee, that was not a basis of our conversations. My philosophy around these types of things, this, these are concerns and not to say that they got put off for any reason, but I think my philosophy is, it was brought to the board to be considered. The board said we would consider it. There, due to changes in administration, as well as this was, these two schools came before my time on the board, there isn't a lot of concrete information. So, I, I think the basis of the, these surveys is to see, like, is this fulfilling of the entire community? And then, kind of proceed cautiously that way. There is language in the surveys that say this is just one piece of the puzzle towards creating a recommendation or a decision. But I, I, as a strong believer in, I don't want to survey people in here and not follow. I also just don't want to make a recommendation, not understanding the true community needs. I don't want to say, I don't want to do it because of costs, but if it is causing harm or trauma to our community, I also want to address that as well. And so, that, that is kind of my philosophy and my thought pattern with the way in which we have decided to go about the proposals.
Okay, Mike, my only thought is that answers to the survey might be different if they understand the financial implications, along with the social, emotional part of it. That's, that's just my, my feelings that-
I don't want to be a district that doesn't do something that's right because it costs. Something always costs someone something. And so, I think that's where I, I hear what you're saying, but I also am struggling with, like, doing what's right.
I mean, I, I have no problem with the survey. I just would like a component of it to be that this will have financial implications. It's not as simple as just deciding to change a name.
Yes. And I think we could probably, in, in, at the bottom of the survey, just share that as well. The board wants to acknowledge that this type of endeavor, especially at these larger high schools, is a financial strain. And we are a community, we can't do all things at one time. And so, I, yes, I think we most definitely can figure out the appropriate language for that.
Ms. Drew.
I'm in agreement with both of you. I think it's necessary for us to present the information to our community, but I'm also in agreement that when you are bringing forth a plan, you need to cover everything that is a part of it, and if cost is a part of it, present it to our community so that they will know what's happening and the steps that we'll have to go through in order to make those changes, to get their feedback, to make the decision. Once they do that, then we can decide as a board if we're going to move in that direction. But we want to make sure that we are open and honest with our community to let them know everything that needs to be known about the name changes and the process that we have to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. So, there's a recommendation to accept the, the naming committee's recommendations on the floor. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. I will open it up for additional comments or questions.
So, this is to move forward with the survey, and then everything would come back?
Yeah, so, at a time, in the next couple of months, the Harmon survey will go out to specifically the Harmon cluster and alumni. That survey, after it is completed, will come back to the naming committee for review. And then, the committee will, based on that survey information, the committee will make a recommendation for Harmon, what, what decision with Harmon. At that time, in the 23, 24, in next school year, we will do the, the same for the Schlegel. And should either of the recommendations be to move forward with a name change, we will make sure that the committee, as well as Mr. Lilly, will get the information related to cost and the time period that it would take to complete the process of renaming. But that recommendation would come to the board first before we would move forward with any of those things.
So, the cost will not be estimated until after the survey?
So, in the survey, we can put that there, based on, based on the survey and other pieces, I think there is some historical context information that we're also still needing around how names, how buildings were named. That information, the cost will not be explicit in the survey, but I think as we, we can look at comparable, like Shawnee Mission North, which I think last year we used when we looked at Arrowhead, we can look at those costs that we've incurred since we have renamed a couple of our buildings in the last couple of years, and we can bring those estimates back. But if the survey comes back overwhelming that the community is not in support, then our recommendation would just be that the board chooses at this time not to rename F.L. Schlegel or Harmon, sorry.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Page.
I've listened to everything that's said. I respect that. And I, too, historically, as a historian, some of the names of the schools and the people that were chosen, it bothers me, but what bothers me more is that I'd like, and I'm not saying we shouldn't deal with this, I want to make sure we're educating these kids. I mean, the name, I'm sorry, but it's more important for me to get these reading scores up, our math scores, get them, make sure we get them prepared to take ACT. That's a major priority to me, and I'm not knocking this, but I'm just saying, I think we really need to put more emphasis on that than this. This will come. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Additional comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, there is a motion on the floor to accept the recommendations. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes. I just want to say again, I think we should have something on the survey explaining that this will incur costs, just to be transparent. It's not as easy- explaining that this will incur costs, just to be transparent. It's not as easy as renaming an elementary school. We have a lot of sports teams and that's a lot of change. So, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
No.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, I will just say that this committee has, thanks to Dr. Irvin as well, this committee has definitely taken into consideration, it is not simple. And I think that is kind of where the thought was before with, let's deal with the low-hanging fruit. I am a strong believer that the work has to get done. And if we don't move in some direction, then it does not get done. And so, I, I appreciate the feedback and the comments made today. I would encourage folks to attend the committee meetings to learn more. And, and I don't think any committee member or any of the staff take any of this lightly. And I do agree with regard to how do we continue to get academics and those things up. And so, I look forward to hearing an update from the academic committee and those that are doing that work as well, because I think that will help us all understand that we can do many things at once. That is why we have chairs, that is why we have committees, to make sure that we are moving the work along. So, all of that to say, Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes, thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. And thank you to the committee for the work that you've done. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Continuing on with our agenda item number seven, for these are new business items. No action is being requested at this time of the board. These are for informational purposes only. If you have questions, now would be an appropriate time to ask those and after the meeting as well if something comes up that you don't ask today. So, first item is the summer learning enrichment programs. Are there any questions on this item? Yes, Ms. Russell.
I apologize. I did not ask this question. Are students that do not attend Schlegel eligible to attend this session? And is that an option on the enrollment?
So, it's for all middle school students. It's targeting middle school. So, any middle school students that are a part of summer learning will be a part of it. We'll transport them over there. It's not for high school. It's just at the Schlegel track and field. That's where it'll be.
Did, it's just...
It's just for middle school. It's a targeted...
But it's take Schlegel track. What does that mean?
The area...
The cluster?
Yeah, no, no. So, the location will be at the Schlegel field because you need, like, track, like, you need the facilities. It's outdoors. The facilities will be at Schlegel.
We're going outside for ACT prep?
Oh, you're talking about ACT, sorry. I'm sorry. Because Schlegel was on there.
Are we talking about, I'm, maybe I'm talking about the wrong thing.
No, no, it's two parts. It's two parts.
There are two components. Good morning.
Good morning.
There are two components that are listed for enrichment, which is the agility course that is for our middle school students. And then, ACT prep is going to be offered to all of our high school students that choose to sign up.
But they're both through the same thing?
These are two different vendors.
So, A, are we talking about summer learning enrich, oh, you've put them all together in this item?
They're two different items, but then one is ACT prep.
And one is the ACT prep where they're getting the incentives, which I guess goes back to my question. Do you have to be in the Schlegel cluster to participate in the ACT prep?
No, all, that will be offered to all students.
Okay, thank you for the clarity.
Yes.
The Schlegel event, the thing at Schlegel was the outside thing. That's why you said Schlegel was like, uh, so, okay.
We're on the same page.
We're good, yeah. ACT will be at all the high schools, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Additional questions?
I don't have a question. Just that this is an excellent program, the summer learning enrichment program by Mr. Michael Graham, who is a former student of mine from middle school. And I'm just excited, the fact that he's moving in the right direction to help educate our students. And I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Additional questions or comment? Okay, seeing none. Next item, over the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, adding a sports policy. And this is for informational purposes only. That information is on the agenda for you, board. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Clark?
My only question slash comment is I see that Ms. Romstead's name is attached. I just want to make sure our new director had some type of voice with this.
So, there, we have set up transition days, but the, this, the unified bowling is just expanding opportunities for all of our students. It's, we supported and he's supported to move forward.
Okay, perfect. I just didn't want him to walk into something that we recently approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Additional questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to give kudos to our amazing bowling staff that we have here in the district. I think it speaks highly of the bowling staff, as well as the amazing bowlers. This year, I did have an opportunity to go out to Casey Bowl and seize a variety of the different teams here in our district. And so, I'm excited that bowling is an exciting sport for Kansas. I love bowling. I'm not as good as some of our students and I probably should never try to say I can compete. But I'm excited to see this come to fruition, as well as encouraging our board. It's a nice air-conditioned facility. They have great popcorn to get out there and go support our bowling team, so.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Additional comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue to move forward with the next agenda item. The proposal for the adoption of science curriculum resource for medical, middle school science. Any questions for this agenda item? Yes, Dr. Nguyen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Help me understand, someone help me understand, Carolina? Is this... Could you give me just a little bit of background, why this, is this a model that's been tested? Did I miss something in the explanation?
Dr. Fernandez Flores is coming to the microphone.
And Randy, while she's coming up, I just want to share, I have mentioned it before. While I understand that education continues to change, I do get concerned when we change curriculum over and over and what it does for our students, because while teachers recommend it, I also just, it presents something new to students that then you have a mosh-posh of. Then we have 10th and 11th graders who had this one curriculum, but we implemented in 7th grade, this other curriculum. And so, at the high school level, it's then staff having to, to differentiate between what students may have learned and what they may haven't. And so, I have shared this before. Consistency in curri- curriculum, regardless of who is here serving our district, is important because its ultimate impact ends up on our students. And so, it is hard for staff to teach when there are 50 million things going on. But it's even harder for students to understand the trajectory when we have five different curriculums every other two or three years. So, that's my only statement. But I am in support of this.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
So, the question was on the Carolina name?
Well, just, could you explain to me, it says that you had, I guess you had two sources to look at and you chose this one?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the, the curriculum developers is a nonprofit called OpenSciEd. And they have licensing agreements with various distributors. Carolina Biological is a science supply company that also does curriculum. So, they have their version of it and we're purchasing the kits, the materials, and things through Carolina Biological, but it's still OpenSciEd, which is the, the curriculum resource.
So, again, help me understand, the, is this not something, there's only two to choose from? Amplify and OpenSciEd?
So, Amplify and OpenSciEd are the only two curriculum resources that have been rated as high quality by Ed Reports. So, those were the only two that we...
By whom?
By Ed Reports.
Okay.
And so, those, excuse me?
Ed Reports.
Ed Reports, all one word, yeah. Ed Reports. And they're just, they're a nonprofit who does really detailed evaluations of curriculum and is designed for the standards.
Okay, and?
And...
And what made one stand out over the other?
So, both of them are rated high quality. One of the main differences between OpenSciEd is that it's an open education resource, so we can take, modify, iterate, and, and make modifications that are needed, that are more flexible for our needs. We also have the ability to take some of the money that's spent on licensing for other materials and put that directly into teacher capacity development and professional development, which also gets to our goal of trying to develop teacher capacity and engaging in those things, so we can put more money towards direct teacher development instead of licensing fees.
Okay, so, did you give us the source of the, the rating?
I believe that Ed Reports was linked in the, in the presentation.
I'm sorry?
I believe that Ed Reports information was linked. I don't know if it's a direct link, but I can, we can get that really easily. It's, it's readily available on edreports.org.
Were you looking at it? Is it in there or is it not?
It is not, Dr. Lynn.
I think we may have mentioned Ed Reports, but maybe not directly linked it. But we can, we can get the reports. And they have high-level executive summaries for both of them that are, that are pretty accessible as well.
I can include it in the, end of the week, this week.
Additional, Ms. Drew.
I just noticed that it has adequate training for staff and it's very good to put them on the path to do what is necessary. And one of the things I liked about it was that it's applica, it's applicable and it'd be connected to career readiness standards, so the students can be on the right path to do what they need to do, even if they want to go to college. It does help. Thank you.
Let me follow up. Training for, for staff is most important, but student outcomes also. And you have, although not all students are the same in all, all, all districts, but within your Ed Reports or whatever, there was some assessment of student outcomes.
From evaluation, largely, Ed Reports can't go in and look at testing data outcome. But what they're doing is, the, the very first gateway that Ed Reports uses is, are these resources designed for the standards? And then, it goes into other gateways only if it makes through the first gateway. And so, it continues to look at design for the standards. But the, the pieces around student outcomes, the, there's a lot of, in the development process of specifically OpenSciEd, they have a nine-month development process for each unit, where they write the unit, send it out to be field-tested by thousands of students and teachers, and get outside review, get feedback from the, both of, both of those, iterate, get some more feedback before they even release it. So, the, the field testing is more extensive than any other resource I've ever seen.
Okay, so, will I, our teachers still have to align them to Kansas standards?
They are, so, we have, Kansas is a lead state for the next generation of science standards. And so, when you see Kansas College and Career Readiness Standards for Science, they're word-for-word in GSS. So, it's designed directly as if it was designed for Kansas science standards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My question, when I was, sorry, Mr. Lopez.
No, please.
Okay. So, I think when I initially looked at this, I, thanks for all the clarity you've provided. So, the field test was not completed by our current staff. You are talking about the national report related to. So, are, is our current staff supportive of this? Because I want to bring to the point that you are sharing that we have two options. One of the options we already have in our district that is already highly ranked in addition to this OpenSciEd. What is the feedback loop for our current staff?
So, for clarification, the feedback, or the, the field testing that I was talking about was in the development at the national level. But the field testing that we've done, every single middle school has had a teacher represented in either the, the curriculum cadre development work where we're looking at it, or in testing out and piling over the last couple of years and trying out the resources. And so, the feedback that's in the presentation is from teachers that have been involved at the district level using those resources.
Thank you for that clarity. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Additional questions?
Slide 11 has some of that information.
Thank you. Slide 11 for that information, for those that didn't hear. Okay, seeing no additional questions. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, Dr. Fernandez Flores.
I was just thinking, as we have curriculum conversations, I feel like this is not for you. I feel like we have a lot of the same questions. And I, the PowerPoint does have a lot of information. I'm just wondering, do we start, like, having some standard language that always sticks out to us? That kind of speaks to those questions that we always have. Just a suggestion, because it is a big undertaking for curriculum. And the board's looking through the slides and trying to make it make sense. But a lot of the questions we have are really kind of the same, like, how are you going to implement? Where have our staff been? What's, you know, where schools? And so, just maybe having that as a template that's used, just a suggestion as we continue to go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. And as we continue to integrate the work between curriculum instruction, Diploma Plus and all of that, making sure that that language, and I think staff, it sounds like, is working through that. And that's a big undertaking, but I, that's, that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
I would echo that suggestion. I wholeheartedly agree. It, it is a lot to go through the slides and then to also make sure that we're doing the same all the way through, through all of the pieces. And so, that would be my strong recommendation to support Dr., I mean, Mrs. Clark's statement. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I see staff nodding their head and taking notes, so thank you. Okay, if additional questions do come forward, please make sure we submit those out. The next item under new business is, again, informational item for the solicitation of bids for a new electric feeder main for North Central Office Building A. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Again, board, please, continue to review those items that came before you today under new business. As additional questions come forward, please make sure we submit those to Dr. Stubblefield and she'll disseminate that to the proper staff. These may potentially come back to a future board meeting for potential action. Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And help me remember, Dr. Stubblefield, is the format of new business to, not to have presentations, just to respond to questions?
Correct. We provide the information and then, the first time and then the second time, you would vote on it. But typically, the new business items are, there's some dollar or MOU, so it's not in a presentation format.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, since Dr. Nguyen brought up that question, I would just ask that the process of the agenda items be documented and maybe discussed at the board meeting. I think there have been lots of questions around processes for board agendas and items. And I think that may just continue to provide clarity, both for seasoned and newbies in the future, to understand what that looks like. Because now, these items and new business will, whenever they come back, go to updates and approvals, correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Taking note of that. Okay, additional questions? Okay, seeing none. So, we'll continue with our agenda. We're actually going to, our community member who's here, who had asked for community comment, is here. So, we do want to honor her time. But for the purposes of the comment, I would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma. Going to give us a couple of minutes to get to the room, so going in at 11:25 for five minutes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
I don't know if I missed what you, now, she's going to speak before we go to executive session?
We're going to go into an executive session and invite Ms. Carter to come in session with us so that we can hear her out. Yes, I'm sorry if I wasn't...
I didn't know we were leaving her out.
No, 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 I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
Trying to follow, okay.
She will join us in executive session. So, Ms. Smith, Ms. Carter will join us in exec session, as well as Dr. Campbell and Dr. Stubblefield. Sir, a motion to recess to executive session?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell? Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, Dr.
...
Our staff consists of twenty-eight employees, divided among residential and a commercial division. Residential is houses. Commercial is everything else as far as real estate. And we also account for personal property accounts. That's going to be manufactured homes, boats, trailers, stuff like that. We do value every parcel as of January first every year. So, that's sixty-seven thousand, six hundred parcels. It's a big project. I always start these presentations off with the idea that appraisers don't create value. We're just interpreting what market participants, that's buyers and sellers, are doing with their decisions in the marketplace. That's residential and commercial property. We've just got the legal responsibility to analyze those transactions and determine a market value, in this case, for the purposes of apportioning property tax. It's also important to note that we are an independent office within the UG. We're housed by the UG, appointed by the Commission, but we're a state office who reports out to the State Agency, its Property Valuation Division. We do our work prior to any budgets being set and without any outside influence. There is a conception out there that we're a revenue generating office. You know, we just juice values, for lack of a better term, to gain revenue. We're just looking to get fair market value. It's the elected bodies and the mill levies that determine the taxes at the end of the day. So, again, we're here to appraise all property at fair market value. That allows for an equitable distribution of the tax burden. And equitable, in this case, means everybody paying taxes at the same percentage of market value. We're not over appraising or under appraising any group of properties. Evaluation is market-based and the budget valuation, those are separate processes. Residential parcels are actually assessed at about half the rate of commercial parcels, eleven and a half percent. Commercial parcels are assessed at twenty-five percent of market value. So, for the same amount of value, they're paying taxes at about double the rate. Again, there's a statutory requirement that we appraise at fair market value. Those assessment rates from earlier are set by the state constitution. And we do have oversight that's conducted both on how we do our work as well as the results of that work. Looking at the results of the work, that is called a ratio study. And what that checks is how we are comparing to the market with our values. A target appraisal ratio is going to be at one hundred percent. That, for Kansas, that's a hundred percent of market value. Every property we appraise, it sells for exactly what we appraise for when it sells. That doesn't happen, can't happen. So, there's a range there, between ninety and a hundred and ten percent is acceptable per industry standard. Typically, for residential property, this has gone back three or four years, our ratio for that study is just over ninety-two percent. That's to say, at least at the median, and overall, we are slightly under appraising residential property in Wyandotte County. And the same holds true for commercial. There is an idea out there that we're over appraising. Not to say that some houses aren't over appraised, but generally, we're slightly under appraising. The overall process, January first is our effective date of value. Anything that happens after that won't be accounted for in the year's value. And that's anything. Had a gentleman call after we sent valuation notice and said, "My house burned down." First question I have to ask is, when did it happen? Luckily, or unluckily, I guess more unluckily, but for the purposes of it not being on the tax roll, it happened before the first of the year and we were able to remove it from the tax roll. If it had happened January first at one o'clock in the morning, it would have been a different situation. So, that effective date is very important. We set values. We send notices of value. Those went out March ninth this year. Typically, we aim for March first. This year, because of the perception and the idea that there may be some sort of a crash or a softening in real estate values, we took a bit of extra time, wanted to make sure that all the sales we had towards the end of 2022 and even to, for a trend, the beginning of 2023, wanted to make sure that we weren't missing the market downturn. Spent a lot of time looking at that and did not find one. So, we were a little bit late. The appeal deadline was actually extended. It would have been April seventh. That was a holiday. Expanded it to the tenth. That was yesterday. So, the informal appeal deadline has passed. What we're working on right now is the valuation appeals that we received. That's an opportunity for taxpayers to come in and visit with us about the value of their property. And it gives us an opportunity to get a close look at the property. So, as part of that process, we're going to sit down and have a conversation about that specific property. Those are going to be worked up until or through May twentieth by statute. It gives us time to certify our values to the county clerk. Kind of kicking off what we call budget season. Those values that we certify the clerk are going to be transmitted to all the taxing jurisdictions. And budgets are going to be set. The assessed value and the budget are used to calculate a mill levy. That goes on the tax bill along with our value and we start the whole thing all over again. We do get a lot of questions of why would a value change from the prior year? I'll tell you that ninety percent of it right now is just the real estate market. People are just flat paying more for properties than they were two, three, four, five years ago. We've got some slides that kind of illustrate that. We also re-inspect every property at least once every six years on a cycle. Building permits, we're made aware of changes to a property and those can be enhancements or detriments. We're going to go and account for those in our value. And then anytime a property sells, we're going to make an effort to make sure that we get there as quickly as possible after it sells to capture the condition and how that property was at the date of sale or as close as we can. What that allows us to do with our work is, if it was remodeled, great condition, great. That's an idea of what a great house in this neighborhood is going to sell for as far as condition. If it was in need of a bunch of work, same. So, we can compare apples to apples as opposed to apples to oranges. The sales price growth that we have been seeing over the last couple of years is slowing down. Unfortunately, our housing supply still remains very low compared to the folks that are wanting to buy. Even with the interest rate hikes, monthly rents still exceed monthly mortgage payments in many cases. So, moving into 2023, this will be our January first, 2024 values. This will be next year. We do anticipate that appreciation we've been seeing to slow down pretty significantly due to those higher mortgage rates. But we're also seeing that the home prices that have been existing for the last couple of years appears to have been, it appears to have become the new normal for a lot of our neighborhoods and areas. Looking at some MLS data, the important thing off of this slide is the average sales price for 2022 sales was two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. This is Wyandotte County-wide. That median, which takes out some of the outliers and maybe is a better measure, is a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. Moving down the right-hand side, the days on market are still extremely low compared to what I would consider a balanced market. And something we are seeing is the overbidding that we had been seeing. People just paying ten, twenty thousand dollars over. List price seems to have ceased for the most part. Part of that is there's not quite as much exuberance. Part of it is sellers have kind of priced that in at this point. But still a very tight housing market. Talking about that slowing, we use any resource we can get. This happens to come from Zillow. You can see that appreciation, first part of the year, just up, up, up until about July, mid-July. That's when the interest rate hikes began to take hold. Bit of a dip. Part of that is seasonal. But towards the end, the first of the year, that's begun to increase again at a more normal rate. We've looked at some data for the first quarter of 2023 and it continues, not like it was, but prices are still up. Part of the reason our market, I think, is a little more resilient than others nationally or even locally is real estate markets look for equilibrium. The median, single-family, and this is from Redfin, and we selected that because they had the surrounding county data already kind of formatted for us. And it's tough to get some of the information from Missouri. Our median, single-family sale in 2022, according to them, was a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. The next closest community in the metro was Jackson County at two-hundred-and-twenty-three. Almost a forty-thousand-dollar gap, making Wyandotte County an attractive place to come and buy a home that could still be affordable compared to a lot of our surrounding areas and counties. Something we also do to look at the housing or the health of the housing market is we do look at foreclosures. I was here, two thousand and eight, when we had the housing crash. And so, I'm sensitive to the idea that that can happen. We did spend a lot of extra time looking at it. Part of it is we do track foreclosure filings. The crash caused a lot of disruption, a lot of foreclosures. A lot of people lost their houses. And as far as the system, it took it probably until two thousand and sixteen to work through all of those foreclosure cases. Stabilized at around four hundred, which is unfortunately fairly typical. We had the pandemic. There were a lot of moratoriums on processing those. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, not a lot of them even got filed. The moratoriums ended and I really expected a flood of filings in 2022. We didn't see it. I think that that's down to the fact that if people do get in trouble and need to exit a property, they're able to list it, sell it, take some equity from it as opposed to just having to go through that process like they did during the housing crisis. Talked a bit about the new values that we're seeing, the new sales prices that we're seeing, kind of becoming the new normal. This is 2019 to 2022. Again, this is sales kind of arrayed by price range. If we look at the under-fifty-thousand-dollar market, for lack of a better term, back in nineteen, a hundred-and-eighty-four parcels or properties, houses, sold in that range. And a good number of them were properties that people could move into and live in. They were habitable. Twenty twenty-two, there were thirty-seven in that price range. I haven't looked at every one of them, but I would be very surprised if any of them or very more than a very few of them were houses that people were able to move in without doing work and stay in. Again, going back to 2019, typically, our mode, our most frequent sales prices, we're in that hundred to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range. By the time we get to 2022, it's in that two-hundred to three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. It's just prices are moving up across the board and that's what's causing the big increases in appraised values. We've broken this out by our model areas, that same information, median sales prices. And what that shows us is that it is all across the county. It's all areas, all neighborhoods are seeing those big increases. And there's copies of this presentation on our website that have all this information plus a little bit extra. But it is, it is countywide where we're seeing these increases. Another thing to point out on this slide is as we're setting values, as we're appraising, for a comparable sales approach, we're always going to look to the subdivision first to see if there are sales there to use to compare to our subject property. Then out to the neighborhood, which are smaller geographies based on similar construction styles and the neighborhood groups, which are going to be similar groups of neighborhoods. The model boundaries on this line, though, or on this map, the comparable sales and the information used for analysis for a home in one of these models is never going to cross those lines. We get the question of, you know, why are you comparing or, you know, you're saying Edwardsville and KU Med, they're never going to cross. They're distinct markets and there is a separation there to keep from over or under-valuing property. So, the bottom line of all this is there were sizable increases in assessed values, appraised values for residential properties. For USD 500, what that equates to at this point, and this number will change due to appeals, due to some other processing that gets done. But for your real estate assessment for USD 500, it's going to be an eighteen percent increase over last year. That is sizable. Looking at an individual property level, and this is median to median. So, we looked at what our median appraised value was in 2022 versus what it was in 2023. Almost a thirty-thousand-dollar increase. And if you take that out to tax dollars on a, on a bill, that's going to be a little more than six hundred dollars at current mill rates. So, that is going to be impactful on folks and their bottom lines. And again, that's a median measure. Half will be increased by more, half will increase by less. And this is just USD 500 properties. There are some additional ad valorem taxes that aren't included here because we don't know about them yet, don't know what they're going to be. Utilities are state-assessed. That information won't be available until June fifteenth. And then personal property, we aren't done setting values yet. With that said, those are relatively smaller portions of that ad valorem tax base. And again, I don't see where they move the needle a bunch. But again, that eighteen percent, that's going to come down some. I don't know where it's going to land, but it's, it's a big increase after a big increase last year. With that being said, talked a bit about the tax base and how the assessment rates work. In, and that's KCKCC. I didn't update the header. I apologize. This is for USD 500. About sixty percent of the tax base in USD 500 is residential properties and about forty percent is on commercial properties with not-for-profits, ag, vacant properties kind of taking up the remainder. So, that has been a shift from prior years because residential properties have been increasing at a higher rate than commercial properties. That burden has definitely shifted onto the residential taxpayers. That's all we have prepared, but I'm also prepared for questions. And again, I appreciate you all's time today and letting me come visit about this. I'm hoping there's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Willard, for the information. Open the floor for questions from the board. Ms. Clark?
I do have one question and this is just more for education for me. So, when you showed the number of foreclosures, were those foreclosures that actually were, were just filed or they actually went through?
Those were filings.
Okay. So, those, okay. So, those weren't our final numbers, but they were close.
Right. And it's, it's an indication, you know, once it gets to that foreclosure filing, it's tough for folks to get out of that.
Yep, understood. So, then my, just my last question and again for education. Do you all talk? Does your department or where do we send people for assistance?
Sure. And so, let's think about assistance in a couple of ways. If people feel like their property value is incorrect, absolutely send them our way. If we've got citizens or taxpayers who are sixty-five and over, we can also help them with some tax relief programs or the county clerk can also help them with those programs.
Okay.
And if you've got folks that are wanting to do some remodeling or make some improvements, the Appraisers' Office also houses the Neighborhood Revitalization Act program. Send them our way and we'll help them see if they can apply for that and rebate some of those incremental taxes. Those are kind of the big things we can, can offer as far as it goes.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
As a follow-up, do you all do any foreclosure prevention programs or have resources for, for anyone that's not quite there but maybe going to that space?
Not directly with our office. And I could actually do a bit of research. Again, that has been less of an issue the last few years compared to what it was. I know there are some state programs. I know there are some community programs, but I don't, I'm not up on them today.
Great, thank you. So, Ms. Russell?
I also just want to thank you for your presentation today and acknowledge that you are a fellow Saber parent and a proud PTA member. And so, I am grateful to see you here today, but also just wanted to bring that perspective. I, I do, Mr. Lopez, to your question, and a little bit, Ms. Clark. KCK loves their neighborhoods and their neighborhood associations. Those MBRs in our community also have access to the Neighborhood Revitalization Funds through our Community Development Department here in our county. However, it is very similar to what you said here. The issue around, we have a very low housing stock. And so, the work that I do day and out is we've got to keep people housed. And so, because they have very limited or no options in Wyandotte County. And so, I think as a school district, there is a little bit of a role that we play in how we beautify, but also how we can, how we commit to neighborhoods and the revitalization, but also how we support our neighbors and our local schools. And so, thank you for this presentation. Thank you for finding it important to bring it to us here. And I would encourage us to house this presentation in our board minutes as well as... house this presentation in our board minutes, as well as making that information available to folks that may find it useful. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and thank you very much for coming because what you have provided statistically reflects many of the complaints that I have with us trying to compete with the Johnson Counties of the world because the tax base is not the same. So let me ask you questions, I mean, I had to preface that to let you know my position because I've never met you before, so nice meeting you. Let me go from your last forward. Help me understand what you said about, don't, don't go too far, I'll get there, but you can stop.
Okay.
Your six hundred dollars per, did I hear you correctly by saying six hundred dollars per mil? What did you say?
What did you? Again, trying to figure out a way to break it down and look at what the impact on a typical tax bill would be. Just looked at median, single families.
Okay.
So at the median, so half are going to be more, half are going to be less. At current mill levies, it would be about a six hundred dollar increase from all jurisdiction.
Okay.
Because when I, when I look at mills, when I look at that tax bill, when people come to me and ask about it, it's all of it. It's the city, county, library, all of it. So that's just how I tend to view it. But yeah, absent changes in the mill levy, it'll be right around six hundred dollars at the median.
Increase.
Increase, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then let's go back to that, that map. We'll go there. So who established these zones or models, if you call them?
Sure, we, we establish them, we look at them every year and see if there are adjustments that need to be made. And what we do is look for similar real estate markets to group.
Okay, and, and zones, what are, excuse me, models, what are USD five hundred?
Oh, let's see, six, so one, call it one through...
Probably one, two, three.
Yeah, you got one, two, three, five, seven, four, no, not seven, sorry, four, and I believe six.
So one, two, three, four, five, six?
Correct.
Okay, and then...
And twelve.
And twelve. It said in twelve.
Twelve is like the KU Rosedale area.
Okay.
That's Rosedale.
Can't see from here. There you go, thanks, sir. Should have used that in the presentation.
I just found that this morning.
Yeah. New inventions, can you believe it? So, all right, and these, these corresponding twenty-two figures mean what?
So those are, I broke it already, those are the median of the prices for houses that sold in those models.
Okay.
So those are closed, sold transactions.
All right, thank you for that one. And then can you take me back to the, the chart you had that showed Wyandotte County, I think, average cost of housing and Johnson County, this one, okay. So you're saying Wyandotte County's, what's the one eighty-five thousand?
The one eighty-five, that was the median sales price in two thousand and twenty-two according to Redfin compared to that same measure for the other counties according to Redfin.
And Johnson is four twenty-five?
Correct.
All right. Which means what?
Well, I mean, that means just on the face of it, that property, and it could be a difference in housing stock, in a lot of cases it is, a difference in housing stock. At the median, it's going to cost you double or a little more to buy a house in Johnson County compared to Wyandotte County.
And I'll take it further, further down the line, that then the person buying the forty-five obviously has qualified to purchase the forty-five at a higher rate than, or nevertheless, no, but the person eighty-five is at eighty, one eighty-five?
That one eighty-five is, is the same measure for Wyandotte County. And again, it's, you know, it is what folks are buying and selling at.
And it's based on whatever factors, but one factor is income?
Well, one factor is going to be income, and, and the main factor in a sales transaction is somebody wanting to sell it and somebody wanting to buy it.
Got it, but you have to have the money to pay for it?
Yes.
Okay, we all know that. How many appraisers do we have in Wyandotte County?
How many appraisers for the, for the County Appraisers Office?
Yes, or however you figure it, I don't know.
For our office, we've got about seventeen staff appraisers.
Okay.
And then the remainder of our staff is, is admin and folks that help do things running.
Now, let me ask you this, and I thought this was an interesting response. I sit on a Rules and Regis Committee.
Okay.
So the Board of, of Real Estate Appraisers came and said they do, I guess, because of shortages, windshield appraisals. Do we do windshield appraisals?
And that's for financing, yeah, there is that that happens. For our purposes, we know that houses don't grow typically, and we've measured every house in the county. So for our annual review, for that once every six years, what we are doing is going and taking an updated photograph of the property. And if there are changes that need to be addressed, we're going to get out, measure additions or something that we didn't know about, we're going to get out. But typically, it's go, make sure that the house still looks like it's in whatever shape, make sure that it hasn't changed physically, and then on to the next one with stops for when we note those changes.
So your appraised value, your appraisals are based on structure, not internal, only external?
And again, because there are so many of them, we've got to make the assumption, and it's not always true, that's why we've got the appeals process, and I feel like it's very important. You know, if we've got a house that looks like it's been well-maintained on the outside, we are making the assumption that it's been well-maintained on the inside. That's not always the case, we know that. Another thing we've done this year different than in past years is had some community meetings just open to the public to talk about the appeal process and encourage people, if they feel like their value that we've set is over what they could sell it for, come in and talk with. Because that's how we can account for that interior stuff. People can bring photos, or if they want us to, we'll go and do that interior inspection at that point. But just due to the sheer number of properties, we're making that assumption that if it's, if it's looks average from the street, it's average interior.
Okay, let's, yeah, two-pronged question now. What's the relationship with your appraisals to redlining? Is there a relationship to appraisals and redlining? And the second, second question of that is, are there any studies of redlining in Wyandotte County?
So I'll answer the first part, and I don't necessarily have an answer for the second part. For our work, which is setting values for tax assessments, what we're careful to do is make sure that we're not overvaluing any neighborhood, especially disadvantaged. We do a study every year as part of our work. It's called a price-related differential, and what it does is statistically analyzes whether we are overappraising low-priced properties compared to higher-priced properties, because that's a metric we can measure. For the last couple of three years, and to back up again, one would be perfectly neutral, that would be, there's just a same assessment level all the way across the board. Anything below that, it's progressive, where the slightly lower-priced properties are being appraised at a lower rate than the higher-priced properties. The opposite, that would be over one, that would be regressive, where we're overappraising the higher pr, or the lower-priced properties. That measure is set at about ninety-nine for the last few years, which means if we're looking and making a graph, the lower-priced properties we appraise are going to be slightly underappraised compared to the higher-priced properties. Because redlining, absolutely, is a thing that happened. What we can do in our field as mass appraisers and looking at property tax appraisals is make sure that we're not causing further harm, for lack of a better term, by overappraising disadvantaged areas.
And finally, thank you, Mr. Lopez. Is there a document that we, that you have compiled that has the value of the residential properties in five hundred, and then the value of the commercial properties in five hundred?
That's something that I could provide, yeah. You mean as an aggregate?
Correct.
Yep. That's something, the clerk is usually going to be the one to send that over after we certify.
Okay.
But I can put together some rough numbers, for lack of a better term.
And so what is your conclusion today about the value of properties in USD five hundred?
The top-line number?
Well, did you conclude, did I miss it? Was I talking to her and I did, I missed it?
No, what I've got here, and I didn't bring the spreadsheets with me, basically looked at that percent change, about eighteen percent higher in assessment than last year. I put it together this morning, I don't remember what that dollar figure in assessment was. I want to say right at a billion dollars assessed, but I could be wrong on that.
Billion with a B?
Billion with a B, assessed, and, you know, several times that appraised.
Okay.
But I can provide that information.
Okay, and if that's Wyandotte, what's Johnson?
Quite a bit higher than that.
We know that. What, what, how many Bs is going to do?
Well...
You got white? Got one Y, go, one B. How many Johnson? Come back with us.
I can provide it, I actually have a copy there abstract. It's, you know, teen Bs, we'll say.
It's how many?
It's...
It's a lot of them?
It's a lot.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen, and I'll just also share, one resource that's out there, Mr. Willard, you may be familiar with it, is the Community Health Council of Wyandotte County produced their heat report, which, you know, looks at Wyandotte County and housing and, and redlining and all of that. So just for those that don't know about it, it's a few years old, but it's still very relevant, would, if you're interested in looking for that, you can find that online.
Absolutely, and I've put together a presentation that we've talked about with staff on redlining generally, and it's something that we visit with our folks about, I could provide it to the board, I put it together a couple of years ago. It has a lot of good information on the history and also the steps we may take to make sure that we're not perpetuating those old harms for our work. So I can provide that as well, if that would be interesting.
Sure, that'd be great, thank you. Additional questions or comments for Mr. Willard?
All right, well, I, I really do appreciate all your time, thanks for letting us come visit with you, and I'll just thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. Thank you. Continuing with our agenda, item B under item eight of Board Reports, we will hear an update on our S R three funds. There's a presentation within your agenda.
Okay, I am actually going to lead this, but Dr. Campbell is going to navigate it once we get connected back to...
Dr. Stebbelfeld, if you will speak into the microphone, we can't hear you down here.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm going to navigate us through this presentation, but Dr. Campbell is going to come and push because I'm not connected to navigate the PowerPoint, so I won't have to go on the other side. And then other staff members are here and may come to the podium as questions come up. So I'll just start, Dr. Campbell, you can go to the first slide. Thank you. This, this update, as I mentioned in my comments, it is one to provide an update to the board and the public on how the S R dollars were, have been allocated and by percentages and schools that were impacted. And it also includes a few adjustments based off of feedback that we received during the camera forums and then looking through the survey data, so you can advance to that. So here, and I'm not going to read it to you, we looked at some broad categories just so that people can follow it, but parent engagement, student health and wellbeing, student programming, personnel, staff development and resources, student resources and staff retention. All of those things fall under the qualified things that we could allocate S R dollars for, and everything that is on here, if we actually enter a contract or pay for it, has come to the board for board approval. Anything that has not, those dollars, if the board has ideas or their recommendations that come out, we would have to go back and make adjustments to certain categories based off of those things that are not already allocated and spent. And this was as March tenth, so it may have shifted a little bit. Is that slide three? Yes, so we can go to slide four. And then, Dr. Campbell, you can go to slide five. So under parent engagement, the total dollar amount was four hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. That includes the Welcome Center and Parent Engagement Support. The board approved this last year. The cost for the staffing and those things came out to be about two hundred dollars a year, but we had two years to fund it, and then the annual two hundred thousand dollar cost will be built into the general budget. At any point, you can ask questions, otherwise I'm just going to roll through. Okay, you can go through the next one. Personnel, this includes all of the personnel positions that are a part of that. Internally, as a staff, we are looking at and reviewing those things that either we will make a recommendation to keep in our budget, but we also have been having, started to have preliminary conversations and direct conversations with individuals who will be impacted once the S R dollars are not available. There may be other positions already in the district that they can apply for and shift to after that, but those individuals that were hired based off of that for that intervention during that time, they are aware. The contracted services with proximity learning services, we will evaluate and make a determination after we look at the data, moving forward about what that will look like once we no longer have the S R dollars, where we may still need virtual support when we cannot hire certified teachers or they're not available. You can go to the next slide. So staff development and resources, these are all the things that have, money has been allocated for. Some of the things have occurred and are ongoing, and some of the things are future things that are coming up, and those things that we need to continue on, like, that we need to sustain, we'll make adjustments and recommendations in our general budget. Staff retention payments have been occurring the last couple of years. Staff is aware that once the, the last payment around that will be in August of two thousand and twenty-four, so that is the total expended and anticipated when we look at our number of staff. Student health and wellbeing, again, this also includes some personnel. We are looking internally, some of the stuff that, some of the, these positions, we recognize are important for us to build into our budget, so we are looking at that internally as a staff. One of the things, the bottom item, we are still pulling together the final information, and we plan to bring it back to the board in May. The classroom cameras, where the board approved were there to be distance learning class, cameras in there, the audio enhancement, it's something we're exploring. If the board approves for us to move forward with that, we, that all would come out of that same line, but there is a safety feature to the audio enhancement, and we're securing a date to have a information session for the board and others. Teachers, I've talked to Dom, and there are a few people who've gotten a chance to go to some sites who actually see it. So that one is, that's an adjustment that we're recommending. The board hasn't approved yet, but we did want it included in the presentation, but those are all the student health and wellbeing components. Student programming, primarily summer school, expanding kids on, kids' own. We still have about two hundred students, a little over two hundred students who have elected to continue their education virtually, and then we also have our Reach five hundred students who we work with to ensure that they graduate. Some of that is paid for out of this. And then we did expand Jack K into several of our schools and the Dual Language Center programming that we will start next year, and again, that's something we're looking to build into the general budget. Student resources, those are all the things that we have either paid for or allocated money. Student resources, those are all the things that we have either paid for or allocated money, money towards that, and there may be room if there are things that have come up that to reallocate or if there's something that we are missing, we can discuss and add to this list of resources. And that's in any category. We just have to remember if we're adding something, we're gonna have to either reduce or take something away. And this is just a different version of the graph, just depending on if you are, what type of learner you are. We just wanted to show it in the pie chart. The largest percentage of the money did go towards staff retention. And then you can see how the other areas fail. And then this is just another version, giving you the dollars and the percentages all in one slide. Same categories. And that's the end. In the board docs, there is another attachment that breaks it down by the, where the, how the schools were impacted, what schools were impacted, and how many students were impacted. So that's the general, where we are, and we can take any questions and/or gather information based off what you have or need.
Thank you, Dr. Stebbelfield. And board, just so we are on the same page too, there were some questions that came before today's board meeting. Some information regarding S R dollars were shared via email. So if you haven't had a chance to review those, those are in your email as well. But I'll open the floor now for questions or discussion.
They still being complete, including like water fillers and some HVACs and things. So they wouldn't show up on this because we were, because those monies have already been allocated and spent. This was the last round of S R three dollars, yes.
Correct. S R one and S R two have been fully spent or is, has been encumbered to spend for capital improvements. As of March tenth, we had fifty-three million left in S R three. But some of that has been, you know, in salaries and things like that, that has been committed for this year and then has also been planned for next year according to what Dr. Stebbelfield presented.
So you don't have to tell me now, but after you take that out, how much is left? You're saying there's still some things we're committed to, but I'm just wondering, after that's done, how much is left?
I would have to get that together for you. You know, some of it, like twenty-five million is the staff retention payments that you guys did approve already. So there is money that's already been committed that I would need to, to take out of that fifty-three million that we have in our actual balance.
Okay.
Dr. Win?
Let me ask you, thank you, the same question differently. Are there any funds that have not been committed?
No. All of the funds have been committed in one of those areas where there is flexibility and then we would have to go back and look. That's why it was like this session and by the time we get to Saturday. I mean, the listening and learning session. So for example, we have that line, like that six million dollars, and we're saying that's for cameras, the audio enhancement and that safety feature. If the board is like, we're not gonna do, like, we don't want to do that, then that six million dollars would be available. If there are things that the board is like, I don't see this, can we explore this? And we're not necessarily committed to X, Y, Z, then we can make the adjustments. So there are things like programming, like we've allocated X million dollars for summer school. If the board was to say like, we want to reduce that and explore something else, then we're playing, when we're planning for next summer's summer school, we would be able to make the adjustments at that time. So there are things, it's all allocated, but there are some things that we can look at and do differently. Yeah.
And then let me ask that, this one. The date of twenty-four, every, all must be spent or just all must be encumbered?
It must be encumbered and spent by September thirtieth of 2024. And we have sixty days following that to actually pay it all. It has to be all spent sixty dollars, sixty days after September thirtieth of 2024.
And what kind of report has to be filed?
It would be part of our quarterly report in our federal drawdown.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russell, and then I'll come back.
Thank you. And please hang in there with me as I'm trying to get all of my things together. So on March twenty-second, 2022, you and others presented to the board what you were submitting to the state as expenditures for which we were utilizing S R three dollars based on all of the listening sessions that Dr. Stebbelfield did, that we did as a community because part of S R three dollars were that we got feedback and heard from the community. And community is many different things. It means different things to many people, both internal but external. You, on that date, the board was presented with a list of expenditures, and I'm sorry, just track with me. I am struggling today after requesting an update because what you are, what we're being showed in this category does not match up to what the board approved on March twenty-second. I understand that some of the processes were that things came to the board and were asked to utilize S R funding for. However, it does not follow through from what we were asked, from the different things that were told we were gonna use to now what we're being told are being used. So I am struggling with the inconsistencies of where we were or where we thought funding, which hence my questions around fillers and changing carpet to tile. And because that's what we were told we were doing with the money. I'm now being told we use that in S R two, but also I saw two hundred thousand in parent engagement, but I did not see it for a welcome center. I saw it as reading and language for parents. And so I am struggling as a board member to understand where we are and how we are being transparent. That was why I asked for this session, and I'm literally sitting here shaking in my bones because I don't understand how I'm lost and I'm supposed to be a part of this. And so I am asking that we go back to that document that was presented. I also shared this in my, in my questions, that I would like to see the correlation based on what the board approved, and if there were changes made, that those changes stand out versus what we're now seeing, which is drastically different than the document we were provided before. I'm looking at you, Tracy, but I am not like saying you are the person that does all of this. But I am saying there is so much inconsistency, and we could be here all day. I could send a list of questions, but I think it's simplest for me if we go back to the Excel document for which we started with. And I will stop right there.
So I will, Tracy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I will offer some clarification. When we brought that to the board in March of 2022, that goes to the state of approved items and we share with the board, those are the things that anytime we actually spent money, it will come back to the board. So while water fillers and those things were on there, there were dollars left over from S R two, is that correct? And we had an earlier deadline that we had to spend S R two, so there were things in S R two that did not happen. And so those things, those things are still happening. It was just shifted to S R two because there was an earlier deadline. When those things came forward to the board as individual items, we did denote that. Where I will own where wasn't clarity, because to your point, I, this is new to all of us. So I wasn't necessarily tracking saying, this was originally in S R three and now it is in S R two. And so I'll own that, that we could have been more explicit about that. But anytime we have dollars allocated for specific things, we, when it comes to federal dollars, we spend the dollars before the deadline. So around like the parent engagement, like the curriculum nights and those kind of things, we also get title funds that have to be spent annually, and you only can roll over so much. So some of those things for buildings and that kind of things were shifted to that. So for that, I think as educators and those who are in the know around it, we can be more explicit and clear about these things or that's happening, it's just coming from a different dollar line. So we definitely can pull that sheet up and talk about what has happened and where it's happened. But a lot of the things were that type of thing, and I'm not making excuses or anything like that. I'm just saying a lot of it was new to us and it was different deadlines. And for S R one and S R two, it was a completely different staff that, well, almost, a lot of different people. And so there are some gaps there, and I own that. Majority of the stuff that was on that list did happen. It may just came from a different bucket of federal dollars.
So where is the twenty million dollars for the water fillers that was on this?
We completed the water fillers in the S R two. I don't know the exact amount.
So I hear that. So then should there not still be twenty million dollars here?
When we were originally doing the S R three budget, we kind of used that capital as our, as our filler to, to hold those funds. And then as things have changed, when the staff retention payments were decided upon, that had to come out of somewhere. So we took it out of the capital, for example. So we kind of put that as a placeholder during our original submission to KSDE and the Department of Education, knowing that those would be acceptable items, but we wouldn't maybe have to do the tile if something else came up, you know, curriculum wise or professional development or staff retention payments along the way. So those are kind of the things that changed a long time.
So I understand that. I guess what, at the heart of my issue is, is that we've surveyed twice now. Families around S R, we've had the camera forums, and the items that rose to the top of those lists have not been addressed with the utilization of dollars, whether it be Title I, whether it be. I am not seeing those items. So parent engagement, reading classes for parents, math classes, the numerous things that were high on those priority lists for both of those groups, I have not seen a report. I have not seen anything that would document that we've addressed what our community said was of highest and greatest need and utilizations. I am a huge supporter in retention payments and supporting our staff, but I am also a bigger supporter of listening to what our constituents said in the survey that we asked them of what their needs or what we could be doing. If there are schools providing reading and math classes, I'm all for it. I want to see that information to know that that's what we're doing because that's what my vote for S R three dollars was for, was to make sure we're addressing the highest needs that our community and our staff said were important. And I don't see that here. So I will come off my soapbox about it. I, my other action that I would ask the board is that we need more frequent updates. We have less than fifteen months to spend this money, and I want to make sure that we are doing it correctly. We are meeting the needs. We are seeing outcomes. We are seeing changes at the heart of student achievement and success for our students before we do any of this other stuff or we say, let's move this money here. So that's where I am.
And so Ms. Russell, thank you for that. The Welcome Center and Family Engagement Department, their update is May twenty-third. So they'll talk about those things that they have planned coming forward. We did just get the Welcome Center open this semester, so some of those nights and your, those things, they're built into that budget, and they'll come out like in the upcoming academic year. I'm looking at Dr. Wilson. But they'll come out. A lot of the schools have done curriculum nights at their school site, but the central ones, that'll happen in the second year as the Welcome Center and Family, as that unfolds and gets up to running. So I just wanted to clarify, that is still the plan and is built in around that, but we had to get the center open with staff and some of the preliminary things before they started to do that. So I, and we hear you, and Dr. Wilson is here, but their report is coming on May twenty-third.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Page?
Yeah. I know, I talked to you, Dr. Stebbelfield, about parents were concerned about tutoring for elementary children. Has that money been allotted for that? I know you're working on it.
Yeah.
And it's already taken out?
Yes. It's a line item when you look up there. So we did, last year, we had TPT and varsity tutoring. TPT is in-person, and they are at our CSI schools in-person, correct? I'm looking, no, they're at our high schools and middle schools, and they're in-person. And we have varsity tutoring at our elementary. That didn't work out. So now we are, we brought back the proximity. The challenge with tutoring is that there are not a lot of in-person services. We are exploring like what we can do for in-person at elementary, but that's a gap in the industry that we continue to seek out for. We, we definitely for like that our kids that are in kid zone and those kind of things can see how we can leverage those spaces, but for kids who are not in there, the in-person tutoring has been a challenge to secure, but we're continuing to explore that. But money is allocated for that, and it's on those line items up there.
And will we spend more? Oh, when it comes to the welcoming center, at least on the northeast side, I don't think people really understand. They're thinking it's more for a Latin community and not for everybody. And I still keep saying that because I tell people about it and how they need to check into that. But I don't think it's been marketed well in certain neighborhoods because they seem to think it's only for one group.
So Will, thank you for that feedback. And Dr. Wilson and others from his team are here, and they can hear that, and we can do the necessary adjustments for that. And when we have the open house for that, we can make sure that we're targeting all of our families.
Additional questions, comments?
I think my, just my additional question. So thank you for the presentation. My additional questions are around the survey. So just going back to the survey and just making sure that we have, or we do have the conversation and we are very vocal about, like, we heard you, this is what we've done based upon the surveys and the voices we receive back. I just want to make sure that we do a good job of, because we had people that really spent a lot of time there. So just making sure we do a good job of communicating that when the time is right and what, what goes back. I think that's part of what happens is we don't, sometimes we all together don't connect the dots back to, so we're, we have a lot of great things happening, but we don't always do a good job of saying, this connects to this, this connects to this, this is why this is happening, so that there's no disconnect and people know that we did hear what they had to say. So that's my, like, my thing about the surveys, is just making sure that we do connect the dots back when, when it's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Additional comments or questions? I do want to just quickly circle back to part of the conversation that happened today around, again, just update, updates around S R and making sure that we get the information. I know we have a listening, learning session later this month where we will give some, some of the similar information, but have additional conversation with our community. Hopefully, we have some folks who are able to attend, community members, residents, staff, who have some input and want to give information. Please attend that session on the twenty-second, I believe it is. So hopefully, you can be there to give feedback, and we can give this information. But circling back to a question or a thought that Ms. Russell shared around, just continuing to share updates and what that looks like. I know we'll have specific information around programs or partnerships that, that are being supported through the S R dollars. But is there a way to, and I, and I know.
Yeah, and one of the things we can commit to for the next fifteen months, similar to how we do the academic reports and updates, we can do a quarterly, because we submit a quarterly report to KSDE. So we can do a quarterly report moving forward until the end of the September twenty, September 2024. So we can do that for sure. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, board. All right. Our next agenda item, under Board Discussion, Agenda Item Number Nine. Board, we, as a reminder, we had, at the last board meeting, previous board meeting, we voted down a motion that was on the floor to not loan out our Sanzen oil paintings for the purposes to pick up that conversation and discussion when all seven board members were present. So we're bringing this back forward. There's some additional information that was prepared by Mr. Gohean and by our staff regarding the potential loan of our artwork, what that might look like, what that agreement may look like. So hopefully, you had a chance to review that. So we're bringing this back forward. The request is. So we're bringing this back forward. The request is still out there, um, that we loan out our artwork. Um, so we want to bring this conversation back to the Board, um, so that we can discuss and see if we want to move forward or not. Um, and Dr. Stubblefield, can you remind me, is there a deadline that they would like to have an answer from us?
They did not give us a deadline to have an answer, but they're wanting it from July to May. So I would say in order for the proper steps to be taken, a decision probably would need to be made no later than like the first May meeting so that whatever needs to take place with like the agreement and the insurance that there would be six or so weeks to have it.
Great. Thank you. So as a reminder, in, in the agenda, there's a draft loan agreement that was drafted up. Um, there's, um, just some, um, personal property and equipment, kind of use of district personal property and equipment drafted up as well. So I'd open the floor for any questions or conversation around this discussion or this item. Um, I think it's an opportunity for us to, um, partner in a way, um, to be able to share our property. But at the same time, I understand some of the challenges, um, and, and, and questions regarding what that might look like and what policies we do or don't have in place in order to do this. So want to make sure we give the Board time to discuss. And again, if we want to make a decision, we can today. We don't necessarily have to. Um, so I'll open the floor for any questions or comments or feedback, thoughts. Ms. Humphries?
I would like to make a motion that we loan the painting to Chitah.
Did, did she speak?
She's, she's looking. She, uh-
There we go. That we loan the painting.
Can you, can you speak into the microphone, Ms. Humphries? I'm sorry. Thank you.
I forget. Um, I would like to make a motion that we loan the painting based on the, uh, information Greg has provided us.
I second.
There's a motion and a second to, to loan the paintings. Um, open the floor for discussion or questions. Any comments? Mr. Gohean, I do have just a question since that motion is on the floor. Um, the agreement that's drafted, as it's currently drafted, if this were to be approved today, are we in a position, is this the agreement that we would go with? Is it, is it as it's written?
Yeah. I mean, this, the, the agreement we proposed is one, if you're going to loan the, the, um, artwork out, our recommendation would be, it would be loaned based upon this agreement. Obviously the other party would have to sign off on that agreement. Um, so, um, if they choose not to do that, then the artwork either wouldn't be loaned out or if they have changes, we would bring those back to the Board before there would be any approval of that.
Great. Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Seeing and I want to make sure we give, if there's a question?
Call the vote.
Okay. So I don't see a question. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure we had, if there was a question, gave some time. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, I will say, yes, in the spirit of partnering and also being legally protected, I am, I would vote yes to this decision.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes. And I would just also ask, um, similar to the recommendation from Greg, um, to you, if this was something we wanted to continue to do, um, that we outline a process or a policy, um, in the future. And so I would put this item on our policy list, um, to take up this summer so that we, um, have a plan and a protocol practice in the future. So, thank you.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, no.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um, and Mr. Mc, Mr. Gohean, if you can make a note around the policy for, um, later this year.
I can. And just for point of clarification on that, I assume that's the, a policy somewhat similar to what Wichita State has for, uh, loaning of art programs. Is that the?
That is what I'm referencing, yeah.
And the other, the other policy that we've talked about, I'm assuming the Board make, wants to make no change to that. And that is that as a matter of course, the district does not loan out personal property or equipment of the district to, uh, people outside the school district. Is that correct?
At this time, yeah. Although I, I see it's older than five years since we last reviewed it, so it might be.
And that was a, um, decision made by the Board at that time specifically after a lot of discussion about whether or not to loan items of personal property out and after certain items were either damaged or not returned. So that was a decision by the Board at the time. I just want to make sure there was no change to that.
At this time, does not look like that, but, um, I would, since it is more than five years since we last reviewed it, maybe it's time that we-
Yeah.
-pull that back forward, um, as we're looking at policies. So, thank you. Okay. Continuing with our agenda, our next agenda items are within executive session. Um, so I believe we can-
Yeah. So, um, staff, you're, um, excused with the exception of Dr. Campbell, uh, Mr. Lilly and Ms. Devon. Thank you.
Thank you, staff, for joining us. Again, thank you to Gloria Willis, Middle School, um, principal guest, to all of your staff for hosting us today. Um, beautiful facility and, uh, thank you for your hospitality.
Yeah.
Would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss teacher negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma going in at 12:55 for- Mr. Gohean, how much time do you think we will need for this for session negotiations?
At least 15, if not 20 minutes.
For 20 minutes, going in at 12:55?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
She said yes. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Second, and Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Second, and Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's show them.
Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of prop- purchase of property under the, uh, under Kansas Open Meetings Act for five minutes, going in at, uh, one forty.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation pursuant to non-elected personnel exception to coma for 15 minutes going in at 1:50.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page.
Wanda Bradley Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Again, board, just a reminder, please complete your self-evaluation from Dr. Weisman. If you did not get the email, please let me know and we'll make sure we get that forwarded to you. And also send any feedback on the board handbook to Dawn if you haven't done so already. Other than that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. Thank you again to Gloria Willis.